Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Eric Alderetti. Phil Becerra.
Here.
Bruce Bauer.
Here.
James Gartner.
Here.
Sean Mill. Mark McLaughlin. Lynette Varino.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? If so, you may fill out a Request to Speak form with the Secretary. And after introduction, have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the Chairman. Nobody have the non-agenda items, okay? Let's move on to the consent calendar. The first item of business is consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve items on the consent calendar?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
The motion carries, well, the votes carry the motion with one abstention and two Commissioners, three Commissioners absent, Commissioner McLaughlin, Commissioner Mill, and Commissioner Alderetti. So we have a three, two...
We don't have a quorum, do we?
Is that a quorum?
How does that work?
Legal counsel?
That works right. There's four of us here.
There's four of us here.
So we can have a three, three, three to an abstention. Okay. Okay. All right. Next item is Commissioner Communication Disclosure. Do any Commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to items on tonight's agenda? Commissioner Becerra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to disclose that I had a phone conversation with Pamela Cepeda on June 9th regarding the certified transportation item, and we did not discuss anything that wasn't in the staff report.
Commissioner Varino?
I received a message from Pamela Cepeda regarding the item number one on the agenda regarding certified transportation. I did not speak with her, but I did return a text that I had no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer?
Likewise, I had a communication with Mr. Cepeda on Saturday regarding that item.
And I had a brief communication this morning, a ditto, the same project, same person called me. And it had to do with just if I had any questions on the items, which I didn't. So we will all fill out a request or Communication Disclosure Form and get that over to you. This is a time and place for the public hearing on item number one. Let's see what that's... Conditional Use Permit Number 2016-18. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please file a Request to Speak form with the Secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the Chairman. The action of the Planning Commission is final following consent of the City Council unless it's allowed by the San Diego Municipal Code. An appeal to the City Council is filed with the Clerk of the Council and a copy is sent to the Planning Department within 10 days of the date of the Commission's action or unless set for public hearing by the City Council. So item number one. Hallie.
Tonight I bring before you certified transportation, which is a conditional use permit for a bus terminal. It is a conditional use permit 2016-18, and the property is located at 628 East Washington Avenue. David Gregory is requesting a CUP, a Conditional Use Permit, to allow the bus terminal. And to do so, he will need to consolidate two lots for a lot merger and then construct a two-story, little over 7,000-square-foot building. Bus terminals require a CUP in the M1 zone, and this is an urban neighborhood M1 zone of the Transit Zoning Code. The property is surrounded primarily by industrial land uses. There is a vacant lot to the north. You see to the immediate left of the site, there is a vacant lot, and that is where they propose to purchase that lot and merge the lots into one to construct a building towards the front of the site. I did want to make one correction from the staff report. It's hard to see uneven on this site plan, but there is one single family residence to the immediate west of that vacant parcel they're purchasing. This is the site as it exists today. You can see they use a lot of school buses and various kinds of group transportation vehicles that they store on-site. The existing landscape is in good condition and is currently irrigated and being taken care of. This is the vacant lot that they wish to purchase from, looking at it, from Washington Street. So they propose to build a building that's a little over 7,000 square feet. It's proposed to have a somewhat tower element towards the very front of it, and it'll be somewhat craftsman in design in that it'll have very heavy knee braces up towards the roof line. It will have decorative block will be on the outside. The rear, of course, will have areas for the buses to be able to enter in, so it'll be roll-up doors there. But all in all, it's a good design and certainly the best in the entire area. Here they propose to show you where they would enter and exit on the property, and they're, where they would be exiting on Washington and entering from Santiago. The freeway is just immediately north of these parcels. You could see where the building is proposed towards the front Washington Avenue side. Again, the most decorative components are towards the front of it, so as new construction for potential residential on that vacant lot across the street is constructed, it would fit well into that environment. So the proposal is that they will be working from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays. And they're going to have, surrounding it will be an eight-foot-tall block wall with an wrought iron fence. They will also be having some work done to the automobiles and buses that will be done only on the interior of the building in order to maintain a lower noise in that area. The use of split face and fluted split face block will be a highlight to this particular neighborhood and area, and they will be using scored concrete, decorative concrete, at each entrance pursuant to our industrial design guidelines. Some of the conditions of approval that we would consider is that no auto repair be outside of the buildings and that they may not operate later than 10:00 p.m. The entry and exit must be clearly marked, and they must park all storage of vehicles other than buses and vehicles. All storage must be on the interior of the building. So staff believes that the proposed bus terminal expansion is going to contribute to this neighborhood as a transitional use between the potential residential off Washington and its location, and that it will spur new development in the area and encourage other industrial properties in the area to improve. We also believe that by the conditions of approval that we've included on this project that it will reduce any potential impacts to the neighborhood and adjacent uses. I do have the applicants here this evening for any questions that you may have, and I do know that we have some neighbors that are here that would like to speak. However, they did not express any concerns when I spoke with them earlier, but they do have some this evening. So if you have questions about the project, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Hallie? Commissioner Becerra?
Yeah, I was just curious, and I'm trying to look through the plans. They'll be landscaping along the wall, along the perimeter, along Washington and Santiago, correct?
Correct.
And what kind of landscaping will be up against the wall?
They still have to submit a landscape plan prior to permit issuance, which they have not done as of yet, but they will be submitting a landscape plan. Currently, it's quite lush. The landscape's in excellent shape. There's some older trees, mature trees that are in place, and they are, they will remain. So anything new that they'll be adding will be included on the plan.
And kind of continue that down Washington, because obviously you've got the chain link right there for the vacant property, so hopefully the idea would be to continue that landscape. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Bruce, next. Okay. Thanks, Hallie. Have we received any written communication on this subject? No communication. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I've got several speakers. I'm going to save the applicant for last. Is that okay? Yeah. Joe Andrade?
My name is Joe Andrade. I'm the Logan Neighborhood Association President. Our biggest concern with this thing is, because we've been going on for years, as you guys know, we've been here before with other things. We've had problems with these guys since they began there. Problem with it is that they have their backup beepers. They work from midnight to midnight. They don't do what they're supposed to be doing. They work on their equipment there during the day. I mean, we have to get up, go to work. Their kids have to go to sleep and go, you know, to school. This is going on every day except for maybe Sunday. Sometimes they even do it on Sunday, okay? Now, if they end up building this over here on this other side, okay, there is a hospital there, convalescent hospital. There's apartments right across the street, too, the new ones, okay? They're going to be making that noise over there, but this has been going on for the longest time with them not doing what they're supposed to be doing. They should have built this many years ago. Code enforcement has been after them. They can't catch them because they don't work at night. They even work at midnight, their mechanics, to get the things done. Yes, they're going to get this done now. They want to get it done now, but why haven't they done it before? They had been talked to by code enforcement. We had to call police to come out. Police don't know what the codes are, so they leave. We've been fighting this for a long time, you know? Now they want to fix things. I was even told I shouldn't even, I went in and talked to them, trying to be the nice person, trying to be neighborly person. Went in and asked them, hey, could you guys please, you know, the backup beepers are waking up the people. It's too early, too late in the morning, or too early in the morning for you guys to be doing this stuff. I was told, the person goes to every council meeting. She knows what's happening. Everything is going on and this and that. Then she turned around and told me, what are you worried about anyway? Logan is going to be smashed down in a while anyway, according to council, so you don't have to worry. That really hit bad. We've worked hard to keep Logan there, as you know, you know. We don't want this to happen like Durham either. You guys have seen Durham, buses on Fifth Street. They park their buses outside. They don't have enough buses yet, but eventually, if they get enough buses, they're going to start parking them outside, parking them in front of the houses, everything else. We don't need that. We've been fighting so long. We're trying to live peacefully. Hasn't happened. We're still fighting. That's why that list on the second page is what, second page and third page is what there are things that we have against them. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel Romero?
Good evening, folks. Pretty much Joe covered a lot of it, but let me tell you this. You know, a lot of our families have been there for over 100 years, including my family and Joe's family. And we've had probably the two world's worst neighbors. One was where disposal, of course, they're pretty much gone, but was still giving us problems because of the storage of construction trucks and the whole bit. And the other one was this transportation after we're here now. All the noise they make, I mean, as far as a good neighbor policy, they don't know what that is. The neighborhood has been patient, suffering for a long, long time, and nothing has happened. I don't know if they're going to continue doing that in the present lot or they're going to continue the same thing in their proposed building. Several years ago, the city wanted to create a park, okay, which I thought was a good idea. From the present site that they want to build all the way down to Civic Center, an industrial area. That's what, that would have been a lot better than what we're getting now. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Andrade? I got that right?
Good afternoon. You know, as mentioned, you know, I'm pretty sure my father and Sammy have summed up most of the information that you guys need to know. But I just kind of, you know, want to fill you in the last couple of days, Saturday and yesterday, 4:40 a.m., you know, trucks or buses backing up. Yesterday, 2:30 a.m., buses backing up, beeping noise. I have two kids, you know. You know, we live in a second-story house, and, you know, this has been going on for quite a while. And the number of buses, not too many, but I'm pretty sure with this new building, it's going to double, maybe even triple. And it just doesn't sit well with me. Third generation of Logan resident, and I stand before you. And, you know, we're going to continue fighting, you know? People are going to want to move in, you know, bigger buildings, bigger. I've seen it, seen it with my very own eyes, and that's not going to happen. We're going to continue fighting. And like my grandmother before me, she stood here and, you know, I pretty much was behind her most of the time, and I think it's my turn to kind of come up and speak up on behalf of the neighborhood and the residents as well, as my father has done. So I really want you guys to really think about, you know, the decisions you guys decide to make from here on out. You know, I've had friends that actually lived in the neighborhood that lived right behind these buses, and they decided, you know what, it was time to move because of the noise, because, you know, they would call us and we'd speak up for them and let you guys know, hey, this is going on. Yes, you know, we've got some help here and there, but there's only so much, you know, that the city could do allegedly. You know, I think it's time to kind of really sit back and listen to us. That's all I ask of you, you know? That's all I ask of you. I mean, you know, I have children, and I'm pretty sure they're going to stand before you guys or your, you know, whomever is here and probably, you know, ask for help as well. That's all I got to say. Hopefully, you know, it kind of resonate in your guys' mind about, you know, the decisions you guys decide to make and they decide to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Cepeda?
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm representing certified transportation, and I'm glad to hear the neighbors have come up. We had not spoken with them, and we had not heard that through the city that there were some concerns with the operation. I think when all is said and done, we do have a situation here where we have manufacturing M2 zoning next to some residential, which is basically catty-cornered to the site. And this operation has been here for over 20 years. The proposal before you tonight is to improve that operation to, that will in fact buffer the neighborhood from some of the complaints that you're hearing now. What this, what the, as described by the city planner, the eight-foot concrete wall plus the security around the property, the acquisition of the second parcel, allowing for the property to be improved and to contain maintenance within the building that is being built, should significantly improve the quality and compatibility of this land use next to the neighborhood. And I did hear from the community, and they're right, that it's been a long time coming, these improvements, but they are here and will be implemented. With some of the comments that were given to you, one of the things that were talked about was working on buses in the open will no longer be occurring. They'll be inside a building. The access to the site will be contained now, entering on Santiago and exiting on Washington. And I think, and that does address some of the concerns that they had mentioned. The other is the condition of their hours of operation. They are being conditioned under this conditional use permit to operate between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., which gives the city, of course, the authority to implement that or enforce that. But I am sure on behalf of certified transportation, it is their intent to meet that condition of approval. They have, they have already agreed to do that. So with that, I do urge the Commission to approve this tonight because it will in effect be a better solution to what's there now. Thank you. And we are here to answer any questions. By the way, we do have a landscape plan, which is making its way through, I think, the city planning, so.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Varino?
Pam, what's the, it says that the proposed plan is 44 bus parking stalls. How many do they have today on-site?
I didn't count them before I left, but there's about 36 or 38. There's about 36 or 38 stalls currently in use on that existing piece of property, in addition to the piece that we have across the street. Really, what this does for us is it really affords us to be able to improve the quality in the area for them by taking the maintenance operation, which is currently on the, between Custer and Santiago, and moving it to the corner, which is where the freeway basically exits off of there. And it affords us the ability to take a lot of that maintenance that we're doing now, in fact, all of it, and put it inside rather than that half building that we're currently using for maintenance.
So there's no plan to increase the number of buses on-site?
I think there's probably four or five stalls, John. I think we increased it by four or five stalls. I think we increased it by four or five stalls. Yeah, we're pretty much at capacity of where we're at now. You know, we may, you know, with four or five stalls, we may increase it by four or five more buses, but that would be about it.
And...
And we don't, by the way, the complaint I heard about Durham, we've been there for, since 1994, you don't find our buses parked on the street.
Okay, thank you, but I have some additional questions. What, your hours of operation currently?
Typically, about 6:00 a.m. till about 10:30, 11 o'clock at night.
Every day of the week, including Sunday?
We try not to work on Sunday, but occasionally we get in there with a breakdown. We have to fix it.
There is a mention of Sunday bus usage at early morning hours, 2:30, 4:40 in the morning.
Well, the buses do come and go, yes, but we're talking about maintenance operations, the maintenance operations.
I want to know about the hours of operations for your buses, not your maintenance facility.
typically what our operations supervisor, my wife is here.
Sometimes they're out at 6:00, but they can't come back in at 3:00 in the morning, especially at grad night time, which we're dealing with right now.
Yeah, we...
How often does that occur? I mean, grad's usually only one month of the, a month of the year.
Actually, mid-May to mid-June, so it's actually a month.
Yeah, we, the kids leave Disneyland about 12:00 in the morning coming home.
Is that the only type of operations you would have late-night hours for, would be grad night from mid-May to mid-June?
Mostly, except maybe when we do breaks for the care with the COVID validation, we would have buses coming in very early.
So you're, but you're, what are your standard hours of operation then for bus service?
Generally, the buses come, generally, the buses start leaving the yard around 6:00 in the morning. And when the athletics are over in the afternoon and in the evening, when they finish with their athletics, they come in and they take the buses up to the fuel station and fuel them and bring them in and park them.
And can I ask you about the block wall that you're planning to build? Is it, it says it's a proposed eight-foot-tall block wall.
Yes.
How tall is it today?
Eight feet. What's around it is, I believe, yeah, it's eight feet today.
Sorry.
So it's, we're going to continue what's existing there around the continuation of the dirt piece of property that sits there, the old railroad right away there.
So there's no plan to put any sound barrier as part of your plan?
Just the wall itself, just the wall itself.
That's already existing?
And, and, no, it will continue around the rest of the yard because in addition to what's existing there today, because today it's fully enclosed as it is today, but when we add the other half an acre to it, that wall will continue on around that property and will fully enclose the whole property at that point, because today, the dirt piece is just sitting there with a chain link fence around it. And so that, that block wall would continue around to enclose the whole, the whole property.
So the, the part of the wall that you're going to be building will actually not, not benefit any sound barrier at all because it's not today? Is that correct?
Well, we're adding...
They're extending the operation to the...
Right, you're just extending the wall, but...
But you're extending the wall around the entire operation now because the empty lot is still being used today. So without a sound barrier or without an eight-foot block, so today, what will happen with this project is the entire area will now be enclosed, which it hasn't been.
All right, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I mean, it's hard to, I'm trying to understand if the hours of operation are 6:00 to 10:00, and buses are coming in after the hours of operation, how does that, how do we, how does the, how does staff treat that from the standpoint of, is it a violation? Is it code enforcement? What do we, what's the, what's the measure on that?
Hours of operation per our city code actually would be from 7:00 a.m. until midnight is what they are restricted to.
Okay, that's fine.
And so in terms of the buses coming and going, if it were, as they're describing how that operates to this day, it would be no different than a restaurant where people stayed after the hours of operation to clean up and do their thing and then leave later on, well after it's been closed. So it's an ancillary type of operation. It's not the primary use.
So hours of operation is more of a figure of speech than something that's enforced?
No, we're speaking about what's the land is being used for in the building. So the hours of operation for auto repair, the primary use of that structure, is going to be office, auto repair, maintenance, and some restrooms for employees. And so that would, what we would be considered to be the primary use for that bus terminal of that building. So the hours of that, that bus building are restricted from 7:00 a.m. until, well, in here, 10:00 p.m.
But the business is buses coming and going and doing and transporting people around the area. I mean, what you, I mean, it's, I'm still not quite clear as to exactly, I mean, it appears to me, pardon? Go ahead.
If I can clarify, you made, this, these are the hours of operation that you're suggesting the conditional use of, we're saying operations will end at 10:00 p.m. If you wish to further clarify that in by the main conditions, you may do so.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, I'm trying, trying to gather the information to decide that.
But it sounds like, and help me understand this, Commissioner McLaughlin, but we're talking about what operation means. And if I understand what you're saying, you're saying is if a bus is arriving at 2:30 a.m., this is a, what they call a bus terminal, or it terminates, it's where it's going to be, isn't that serving its purpose?
Right.
So at 2:30, I mean, to me, it's different from a restaurant. A restaurant is to serve patrons. You close the door at 10:00 o'clock or 2:00 a.m. or wherever that time is, it is done operating as a restaurant.
Right.
When a bus arrives at this place after 10:00 p.m., it is still serving its purpose of operation, correct?
Yeah.
And so what concerns me, though, is we can make conditions. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, both Commission and staff, that if someone were to say, hey, we believe that they're operating after 10:00 p.m., we don't say, oh, well, we're just kidding, we didn't really mean when the buses drive in, or these other things. I mean, we should all be on the same page. Operation is operation. Operation is operation. And correct me if I'm wrong, everybody, but it seems like operating would include the buses coming or going to this facility.
That's, that's my point.
Then you may add a condition to that effect if you find that appropriate.
Okay.
Commissioner Bauer, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I had a question with respect to the maintenance, because it sounded like they were doing maintenance even after these hours, the, the neighbors are shaking their heads up and down. And so, I mean, certainly if you wanted to restrict narrowly the defined operation, certainly maintenance wouldn't fall within that window.
We agree with that. Maintenance would not fall within that, that timeframe.
But it is being done with, outside those windows?
I, I, it shouldn't be, I can, I'll check with my staff and make sure, but it shouldn't be being done at that time.
So, I mean, what I'm hearing from the neighbors, there's two.
Typically, our maintenance staff goes home typically at 7:00 at night, I think it's our last mechanic's on duty at 7:00 at night, if I'm not mistaken. They, they leave at seven, so.
So the, the two complaints that I'm hearing most from the neighbors are the noise and, well, the noise tip is the, is the primary one, actually. So, and explain, I thought you said that this is going to change somewhat the egress and ingress?
Well, it will, because what will happen is, is the majority of our operations will move from the, the Custer Street site.
The which side?
Which, Custer, which is not in this plan. It's an existing site that we currently use today. And it would move that maintenance operations over to the Washington Street site.
I didn't, I don't see Custer.
You don't see Custer on there because it's, we're not doing anything to the Custer Street site. There was no, no request for any changes on that particular piece of property at this particular point. It's a piece of property that we moved on back in 1994. And that operation that they're complaining about, the noise that they're complaining about, would, that operation, the, the whole goal of this is to, is to improve how we do that maintenance today, to move it into this newer building, this new building, and to be able to, to, to function more of it inside of this building where we're at now, we can't even fit a whole bus in it, to be honest with you. We can only put a half a bus in. So we put a half a bus in, work on it, take it out, turn it around, put the other half in and work on it. But it's, it's still a half a building, it doesn't fit the whole. Where the new building, we could fit the whole vehicle inside, necessary, close the door and work on it. Will still be functioning over there from a parking point of view, but the maintenance is going to move across the street to, to the Washington Street site. Our operations run from literally Custer Street today all the way across Santiago to that site that we're talking about improving today. And so what we want to do is improve the quality of, of the building that we're using to improve the quality of, of, for the neighborhood, frankly, and be able to, and, and not just for the neighborhood, it, this will also improve the quality for our employees. It'll give them a much better place to work as well.
So I'm not real clear, where is the noise? Where's the lion's share of the noise emanating? Where's that problem?
It basically functions on Custer Street today, that's where a lot of that noise that they're complaining about today comes from, is on Custer Street.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask.
The exhibit that shows the area surrounding, the surrounding area, was that in your staff report, site location? It says too in the staff report, that might be helpful.
That's right here, this piece right here, this is right here, this is right here.
Now, are you talking about the Custer site to the?
If, if I may walk up there, I'll show you. Do you see where the red arrow is? You look to the right and see those groups of buses over there to the right? That's the Custer Street site, that's the Custer Street site right there. And it has that driveway that comes out on, we, we use the driveway, it's kind of a flag on, flag yard there, where we use the driveway to come and go onto Santiago. And the maintenance is being done to the right over there, almost, there's a group of buildings and they're just, that's set on Custer Street, and then just behind that group of buildings is a, is a building, a half a building, and I call it half a building because we put a half a bus in it. And that's where the maintenance is being done. So what we, what we're attempting to do with this is to build the building up on the very top end there, where you see the buses just above the, the red arrow, which puts us on Washington and Santiago, which we think is a much more favorable site for doing our maintenance operations. We, we're moving as far away as we could when we looked at this. To do this building, we have this, two acres worth of property that we own there, and we looked at how far away could we move it away from the neighborhood?
Okay.
And that's as far away as we could get on our existing two acres of property that we own in that area. Because we own the dirt lot next door, we own that one acre there, and then there's approximately one acre, the, the, as I call it, the Custer site.
What do you, what's going to be on the Custer site, then?
The Custer site will continue to be parking for buses.
So it'll continue what it's doing?
It'll continue to be parking, but parking, not the maintenance.
Is there maintenance? No maintenance on the Custer site?
No, we're, we're going, that's the whole idea of moving the thing over there, is to take the maintenance over to the, to the new building.
And, and what are, what are the entitlements on the Custer site right now? Is there a conditional use permit on the site?
I don't believe there's a conditional use permit. We have an occupancy permit, but I don't remember going through this process in 94 to get a conditional use permit. I think it's only an occupancy permit. Because we bought that piece of property, the Custer piece of property was purchased in early 94.
And the current site?
In 1994, a conditional use permit was not required for the use at that time.
Okay, and then one last question for me is that, so on the, on the site that we're talking about today, what, what is actually taking place there now?
Just parking.
Just parking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get it. The only thing that's on that site today is the, I think it's 36 or 38 parking stalls that are there, is the only thing that's there today.
And staff, so, so the reason why they're before us is because they want to perform the maintenance on the site?
And expand the use to include the, the sort of vacant property.
But if they were just, if they were just going to pack in buses, just park in there, no maintenance, no nothing, they wouldn't be before us today?
They would be because it is a bus terminal use.
I see, yes and no.
Yes. No, it's a bus terminal, it is a bus terminal use.
So it would be.
And that is, that is in the M1 district. We have, in addition, I should probably correct, correct something, it, it, from what staff said earlier, that the code required seven to 10 operation, and that would assume that, that that, that this, they would be in violation. Actually, our code right now does not require that, because it's not the, it's in, it's the M1 zone and M2 zone would apply here as opposed to the transit zoning district because it's sort of, it's that dual layer, and they have activated, they've kept that M1 zoning. So that is what is in place right now, and so they don't have that limit on the hours of operation that they would if they were in other areas of the transit zoning code. So, non-industrial areas.
Holly, looks like she also says something.
Yes, I also would like to add that as they exist right now on Custer Street, they do so, do so in a legal, non-conforming way, which means for the neighbors, they could continue into perpetuity to operate as they are at this site. And so we view this to be a way to better the business as well as move it farther away from the residences, which is a win-win situation. So I, I think that, and the, the reason I mentioned the conditional use permit is because expansion of a bus terminal would indeed require this condition use permit, and that's why they're here today. But as they exist on their existing site, they do not need one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McLaughlin, you had a question?
I'm so confused right now, but. I guess, I guess, I mean, what I'm hearing you say, Candy, is that there is no time period.
That's correct.
Okay, so that the, what was originally said, seven to 12, is not applicable here?
So they're not in violation?
So they're, so not applicable.
Right, so they're not in violation, but what we're proposing is to limit them to 10, 10 p.m.
Well, no, you're not. What you're proposing to do is you're proposing to limit the new site to 10, to, from 6:00 to 10:00. But the Custer site, which is where, which is where the buses are coming in, which is where the complaint is on the noise, that's not being limited, so therefore, the prob, sorry, but the problem's not solved. I mean, the problem is not solved.
Well, the maintenance problem is solved.
No, no, the problem is not solved because.
The maintenance problem is solved.
The maintenance problem, but that's not, but truly, that was only part of the concern that was being put forth. The concern was buses coming in and out, backing up in the beepers and everything else, and we understand that side of it. And the second side of it was the fact of the maintenance, you know, being done after hours. Now, what we're hearing is with the, with the condition, with the conditional use here, we would basically be able to set a time on the maintenance, and the maintenance would be from 6:00 to 10:00, which might satisfy one side of the equation, but it still doesn't satisfy the, the overall concern, which is buses arriving after hours, and there are no after hours because there are no hours and it's not, there's no COP, so, you know, this.
Remember, that's a different project, that size is, it's not part of this presentation.
It's not part of this, right.
Yes, we can't co-mingle it, really.
No, I'm just, all I'm saying is that we're not, there's no, the problem that's being brought forth by the neighborhood is not being solved with, with this particular situation.
Well, and also, some of the problems being brought up have to do with the other site, it's not, but this is not part of today's review here. We're, we're reviewing this because this site is an industrial location.
Agreed.
And the use is allowed with a conditional use permit. We can't, we can't co-mingle it to another site on this agenda item.
I agree. I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm just, I'm just trying to sort out in my mind what the concern is.
Well, me too, yeah, we're listening to the.
What the concern has been put forth. And what I'm saying is, from the standpoint of the concern that was brought forth by the neighborhood, as far as noise after hours, that's noise created.
A different site.
On a different site where buses coming in, it's not going to change. And that's, that's it.
Commissioner Bauer?
Well, I mean, is it not within our purview? I mean, if we say this project does not fit or isn't conforming in certain ways, and they're offering a solution to satisfy those non-conforming, those problems?
It is a discretionary action.
Sure.
One, it's a discretionary action, and two, I think we look at things cumulatively, we don't just look at them in isolation, so. And apologies for being late, because I'm just getting up to speed, but when I look at a project personally, I look at the context in which I find it, not just the individual project, and whether it falls based on that project alone. That's kind of what an EIR does when it's doing an evaluation.
Within the applicant's right to, to offer up a solution, if we don't see a project's going to meet muster, satisfy our requirements, if they want to offer a solution, that's up to the applicant. Well, we, let's save that for discussion, internal discussion, let's, let's focus on any questions to the applicant, then, then we can come back and discuss it as our, as planning commissioners, and in case any other people wish to speak, so we can close the public hearing, then we can, we can debate or whatever.
Thanks, Chairman. I, we do have one thought we'd like to put out there for you to consider, and that is that it seems as if the, the biggest issue really is the arrival of buses late on the Custer side because that's the closest to residential. And so what Mr. Griff is telling me is that with this improvement, 99% of those buses will actually go to the Washington site now, rather than the Custer site.
Well, what, what physically will occur from our perspective will be, we have two types of buses. We have the school buses, and then we have about 15 of the tour buses. And the tour buses are typically the ones that come and go at the, the otter hours. And those buses will move from the Custer Street side to the Washington side at that point. So that will alleviate some of the problem.
That would, it sounds like that would, but, and.
Because the school buses typically, you know, we do an athletic trip at night, they're, they're home at 7:00, the bus is back in the yard at 8:00, 99% of the time.
Is there any other planning commissioner questions? Go ahead.
Okay, so, but if that's the case, why don't you doing that today?
Because the maintenance that's required for the tour buses.
No, take away the maintenance part. Take away the, that's the reason for the parking part.
What happens is, those buses, because of their complexity of those buses, and the requirement for servicing, they need to be close to where that servicing requirement is. And when we, when we move that servicing, all of that over to the other side, they'll move with that servicing to the other side, where the school buses don't require the large amount of servicing that the tour buses require.
That, that's really hard to believe, that you have to have those type of buses near the maintenance facility in the middle of the night, when the maintenance people supposedly are supposed to be off work at 7:00 p.m. So if the maintenance people are off at 7:00 p.m., why do you have to have a bus coming in at 2:30 a.m. and needs to be near the maintenance facility if there's nobody there to work on it? I, I don't, I, that doesn't make any sense to me, why you're not putting the buses that make, that come in at 2:30 in the morning on the Washington site today, and putting the buses that can function between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. on the Custer site to, to be a good neighbor.
We'll go back and look, we'll go back and take a look at that, see what we can do to, to, to move those buses to the other side of the street, okay?
I appreciate that.
We'll, we'll go back and take a look at that, and see if there's something we can reasonably do.
Because they have to be there first thing in the morning.
Any specific questions for the applicant and, and from the planning commissioners? Okay. Thank you. I see some neighbors shaking heads and everything back there. It's real hard for us to know what you, the head shaking means necessarily. So if you want to fill out a speaker card, it'd be helpful to speak, if you want to put your two cents worth in, because the public hearing's still open. Does anyone in the public wish to speak on the subject, that, anything to add? Yes, ma'am? Come on up. Well, you can fill out one after your speak. We just want to be clear on your, your.
Your head bobbing. Hi, my name is, my name is Cecilia Rodriguez, and I live on Logan, and I usually sleep with a window open about this much. The room is facing the part where the buses are. Those buses are on all the time, all the time, not just one day, not just two days, but all week long, okay? I get up at 3:00 in the morning, the buses are on. The only thing is that it's not for like 15 seconds, it's for five minutes. Beep, 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 beep. How can anybody sleep with that? It's not a small amount of time, like you move a car, back it up, and you're done. It's on and on and on and on, okay? If they move it one block away, that's not going to help it. It's still going to, we're still going to hear it, because it, right now, it sounds like it's in our backyard. It's not going to go away. Now, the maintenance that they do there, why are they doing maintenance from midnight to 6:00 in the morning? Because no one can get there and tell them, you guys are doing illegal things. We've done it, we've said it, we've gone there, we, nobody, nothing. Oh, code enforcement has to come in there and find them. Well, they're not getting up at midnight to come and look for them. We know that already. This is not going to solve anything for them just to move ahead and make a building. Now they want to make a building, and they've been doing this illegal all this time, now they want to make it legal? All of a sudden, they want to buy a building and make it legal? Like I said, it's only one block forward. That's not going to take care of the noise at all. And I go to work every single day. I have to be at work at 7:00, okay? That's not, that doesn't do very good for me. So when I get fired, because I can't stay awake, I'll be back. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak before I close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and/or emotion? Okay. I'll close the public hearing, I'd like to bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and/or emotion or both. I'll go last, go first. For discussion purposes, I, you know, I'm concerned that the whole project, the way it came to us, I mean, I'm, I wish the neighbors would come and voice their opinions beforehand, so we'd know that, but I'm glad you did, that's not to berate you, obviously you're not obligated to, but, but I'm concerned, and I think we all are concerned about what you're saying. And I'm concerned about the way the project comes to us vis-à-vis this other piece of, this other parcel, and I think there's a, a solution that could be had with those two parcels, but it's not before us. And what I'd like to see is a creative solution that addresses what I think all of our concerns are here, noise, taken together, and, and there's got to be a solution with respect. Obviously, these people have a right to operate their business, they have, or they should, at least legally and within the parameters of the, what the city requires, and unfortunately, I'm not real comfortable with the information we have in front of us in terms of what the hours of operations are allowed in the zone. I mean, it's, it's all over the place. So I don't think we're ready to vote on this thing, I think it needs some, be taken back, take a look at, the applicant needs to take a look at it, and hopefully come back.
a look at it, and hopefully come back before us at a later time.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Becerra?
Well, I do want to thank the applicant for these improvements. And it looks like, at least for the site on Washington, you've thought about ways to mitigate some of the concerns that you had on the other site. With that being said, I also agree with Commissioner Bauer. I think that, to me, one of the things that is still sticking in my head, and I'm sure it rings in the neighbors' heads, is the backup noise. I, you know, this site that we're talking about here at Washington Santiago, you've got R3 to the north slash northwest, R3 to the west. Then, of course, you've got the whole Logan neighborhood to the east. And, you know, I don't, granted, the zoning is M2 and there are legal rights to it. I mean, as far as the history of the area, we know that industrial was inserted in there, kind of forced into the neighborhood. But that's, that's the history. But here we are today. I'm kind of wrestling with this. I don't know if a six-foot or even an eight-foot block wall really mitigates the backup noise. And I really echo Commissioner Bauer's concerns that I feel like the staff report and the information given to us was deficient in that, you know, we weren't completely aware of this existing site. Now, granted, the existing site is not part of our discretionary action, but it still gives us the story, you know, here's this company, here's where they're at. If you were to have a restaurant come before us, you know, say it's Chapter 1, they're opening up C4, we would hear, "Oh, well, they happen to have another location in the city, here's what's been going on, et cetera, et cetera." That's all been left out as far as this particular application. So, here we are kind of fumbling through going, "Wait, where's the other site? How does it operate?" And I appreciate the applicant kind of walking us through, you know, it's a flag lot, here's where they exit onto Santiago, and it gives us some perspective. But I keep going back to the noise, and I was a little concerned at the conversation we were having up here. I appreciate that we had it, but I was concerned at the fact that we don't seem to all agree on operation and what that means. So, if the neighbors are calling code enforcement, are we going to say, "Oh, that's not the real definition of operation"? That just concerns me. Now, with that being said, if we should move to approve this item, we can always add conditions to clarify what we believe to be operation so that there is no creative interpretation down the road. But, you know, I just throw that out to my colleagues as something to think about. The noise is what really gets me. This new location is better. I do appreciate the applicant's improvements to the site and what they're going to do, but I just, the noise is something I think that's going to be a concern.
Commissioner Alderedi?
Well, I was actually just scratching myself, but I will say this. It was a long flight. I came in here halfway, so more likely than not, I'll be abstaining. But I have to say, just in the time that I was here to listen to this, it sounded like a disjointed presentation. And the information that I've read just while we've been reading, sitting here and as I read on a flight, I didn't understand. And it's very difficult for me to make a decision when I think the staff report's less than perfect. And we've got a property next door, and we can't agree about what operations is. So, I feel like even if I were here for the entire discussion, I'd still be voting without the information that I think is necessary. And I'd like to know more about that parcel, too. And I think Commissioner Becerra's comments are well taken, which is that we can't just approve something not knowing what's going on in the other parcel. And Chapter 1, C4 Deli's one example, but anything that we approve here and any environmental impact report, if we give a negative, approve a mitigated neck deck, I mean, we, that's one of the analyses we go through, is what the cumulative impact is from two sites, three sites, four sites. And so, just based off what I've heard, I don't feel comfortable even making a vote and trying to, trying to determine, trying to change the terms of the CUP to meet it. I just, I wouldn't feel comfortable legislating from the dais in that regard. So, those are my comments.
Commissioner Marino?
I have a real concern. I know that the Custer property is not the agendized item, but I think it all plays together because it's one applicant. And the behavior on one site is behavior that will be transmitted to the other site. It's, and I just have a real concern that if they know that there's concerns with the neighborhood, that they continue those operations, whether it's maintenance or bus service, and they've got two sites. I don't feel that they've done anything to try to mitigate that, to make it better for the neighborhood. And that's a very big concern of mine. I really feel for anybody that has to listen to that in the morning with small children. And so, I'm torn about it, because what I'm thinking is, I mean, should, if we were to move this forward and we put all these conditions on the Washington property, that might worsen the behavior on the Custer property because there's no conditions on Custer.
Right.
So, are we making things worse for the neighborhood by doing that, by trying to condition the heck out of this one to make this better, and then the behavior gets worse there? So, I think it needs, there really needs to be a comprehensive plan for the operations of this, of this business for both properties as they work together. And I think, so I think there's still things that need to be worked out. I'm not comfortable just moving forward tonight.
Mr. Chair?
I just want to ask one question of staff. Was there any sort of committee meeting between the applicant and some of the folks that are here today?
No, there was not. The project did not meet the requirements for a sunshine meeting. The other thing that I know you're frustrated with, but the existing use that is there is, and illegally, as the case planner mentioned, is illegal, non-conforming use. And this application is an application for an expansion of a separate use. And legally, and granted, although we understand your concerns, legally, you have to look at this application discreetly in terms of applying conditions, which is just what you said. And I think, I think you all realize that. The applicant may agree to propose some changes in their operations of their business. It sounded like there was some negotiation going on there and consideration, perhaps, in terms of, you know, where he was switching his, his buses. But you do have to be careful in terms of how we're considering this. So, it is a separate application.
Well, if I may interject, I think, and I don't want to speak for anybody on this commission, I think we understand we could deny this application right now.
You can, yes.
But I think the way that the discussion is going from the dais, it sounds like there's a desire to try to reach some sort of compromise. So, while I respect what you're saying, I think that it's healthy what's happening up here on the dais because there is a discussion to try and make something work. We're not trying to steer foul the law. We're not trying to go outside of what we're charged to do. But I think it's in the best interest of everybody if we have this discussion.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Well, you know, from my standpoint, I agree with what Lynette basically said. I mean, I think if we do impose controls on the Santiago-Washington Street and say, operation hours are six to 10, that because there's no restriction on the, on the Custer Street, the obvious situation would be, well, I'm not going to go to the Washington Street and violate my restrictions. I'm going to just take it over to Custer Street. So, we don't solve a problem. And, and, you know, I think what we have to look at is, is that we're, we're trying to approve, you know, a businesses and the life of the business, but at the same time, there seems to be some issues with the surrounding neighborhood. And we need to look at ways of which we can solve the problem that's been, you know, put forth here. And we all understand that we're dealing with one property, and the Custer property is not part of it. But I think we have to look at some options as to what we can do to mitigate. I mean, I don't think we're going to solve every issue at the Custer Street facility, no matter what. I don't think that's going to get solved. Unless the Custer Street facility goes away and it only becomes one facility, that might help things. But in the meantime, we don't have that capability. So, at this point in time, I mean, I agree. I think there needs to be more work done on some solutions that can solve the problem that was really, you know, the maintenance portion has been, quote, "solved" in some respect, but the, the sounds of operation of buses at, you know, 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning has not. And I think that's a concern.
I'm sure the applicant would appreciate hearing all of the commissioners' comments on this project, but they are requesting a continuance to see if perhaps they could work something out. So, if any of you have any additional items to...
Well, I do have a comment, but I'm going to let my commissioners finish, and I'll be quick then with mine, because I think that sounds a good idea. But anyway, go on. You're done? Okay. So, I was listening to everybody, and the thing is, everybody's right. So, here's the trick. The, it's just from me as an architect looking at it and looking at planning and, you, we have a, as planning commissioners, we have a proposal in front of us, and it fits within the guidelines of, of an industrial site, and it's an improvement, and it's definitely a nice-looking building. Then, we also have the trick of this residential property very close to industrial property, which it is, it's sort of like when I bought my house in Santa Ana and now I hear the freeway. But I used to live in Montana and didn't hear the freeway. So, I made a choice of living in, living in Santa Ana, and now I'm stuck here in the freeway. And if I chose to live on, closer to downtown, then I'd hear the bars at night, and I'd hear something else. So, there's, it's going to be real hard to saddle an industrial business from making some noise. I don't know how you can stop a bus terminal from making noise. But what I, but what I do agree with my, with my commissioners is, I'm not a fan of continuance, except I am on this one. I'm a fan of a continuance, and I'm a, would be a fan of a success on both sides, because I think the neighborhood has a right to maybe see the whole operation, even though it's, we shouldn't be co-mingling it. But in reality, it's co-mingled. It's co-mingled by reality. So, we might as well do a great job, and we want the ownership of the bus terminal to be successful, and also, and the neighbors understand that there's going to be some noise. I mean, it's, it's going to have noise. It's unavoidable. The train station has noise, the traffic, the freeway's noisy. I mean, you know, it's the way it is. And so, if there's a, since they've requested continuance, do we need to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Becerra?
So, I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and continue this to a date to when the applicant would like to bring it back to this commission for the hearing.
We have a second, Commissioner McLaughlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Wait. So, would the applicant have a certain date? Okay, I'll amend my motion to continue to the July 11th Planning Commission meeting.
Hey, we have amended motion and a second. And everyone's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Alder, or Mill, absent.
Alderedi is here.
Alderedi's here. He's always absent, but, yeah. I just assumed, you know.
Okay. Let's move on to item number two.
And that's a public hearing conditional use permit number 2016-20. Jessica, you've got the floor. And make it, make it quick. We don't want to talk long.
Good evening, Chairman Gartner, commissioners. Up for review is CUP number 2016-20. The applicant, El Taco Velos, is located at 1730 East 17th Street. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the on-premise sale of beer and wine at this location. This eating establishment has been a part of the community in this location for over a decade. The restaurant is located in the Superior Market Center, which is located in the arterial commercial zoning district. It is surrounded by commercial, office, and residential land uses. Here, we have a site plan of the Superior Market Center. The tenant is located on the southeastern portion of this center, where the predominant business is Superior Grocers. Here, we have a floor plan. The tenant space is approximately 1,500 square feet and has seating for 66 patrons. There is a display area in the dining portion of the restaurant and storage in the kitchen. Here, we have a front elevation photograph of the restaurant. This is a full-service eating establishment. The alcohol sale will be ancillary to this use. Staff finds that the operational standards are sufficient in ensuring that the restaurant will be maintained as a safe and attractive environment in the neighborhood. During the public comment period, staff received one phone call in opposition of this project from an owner at the Orleans Square Office Building, who didn't feel that this was a compatible use with that office site. Nothing further has been heard from this caller. Based on the project analysis, staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number 2016-20. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to this project.
Any questions? Commissioner Bauer?
One objection you received, do you know where that applicant, or the person objected, where they're located on the...
They're not adjacent to...
It's not even within 500 feet of it.
They're within 500 feet, but not adjacent to.
Across the street, though, right?
They received notice of this. It's not adjacent. It's on the north portion of 17th Street.
On, yeah, on the north side, which is the opposite side where this is.
Correct.
Any other questions? Great, thanks. Oh, sorry.
Is the signage currently up to code?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Do we have any written communication on this item? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. I have one speaker card. Juanito Gonzalez, did I get that right? I may have goofed up your first name, sorry. You can redo it.
My dad's name? I found that out on accident, though, because I wasn't really familiar with the whole, how we were working things out.
Okay.
There's no reading speakers or anything like that.
So, you, do you have anything else to say, or...
Um, no.
Can you talk into the mic, because we can't hear you?
I'm actually just representing my dad from El Taco Velos, so if you have any questions, I can answer them for you now.
Oh, so he's the owner?
Yeah.
Oh, he's the applicant. Okay. Well, that clarifies that. Okay. Sorry, I didn't catch that. Do we have any questions for the applicant? I think we don't have any questions. I'll have to come over and check out your place.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to bring it back to the commission for a motion and discussion or both. Commissioner Alderedi?
I'll move that we adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2016-20.
Second? We have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Mill absent. Good luck. Thank you very much. Okay.
Man, that was easy.
You guys just did that for me, or what?
An alcohol deal? Man, that was so quick. Okay, item number three. Ivan?
Thank you, Chairman Gartner, members of the commission. Up before your review tonight is Clarion Inn and Suites. This is an application for a conditional use permit, number 2016-23. The property is located at 2620 South Hotel Terrace Drive. A little bit of the description of the application. It is an application to sell alcoholic beverages on premises for consumption on premises at an existing hotel and cafe. The application requires approval of a conditional use permit. As you can see where the site is located, it is in the specific development, number 12, SD 12, and it is surrounded by numerous hotels, industrial uses, and commercial uses. This is a site photo of the main entrance for the hotel. And this is a site photo of the existing cafe. All the cooking equipment is located behind the menu wall. This is the site plan of the entire property there. What is highlighted in the red is the hotel lobby and cafe location, and what is outlined by a yellow color line is the pool facility... And what is outlined by a yellow color line is the pool facility, common areas, common grounds. If you see the floor plan here on the right, it is illustrating the pool deck, pool amenity area, courtyard. And lower, just south of that, is a location of the cafe, the lobby, and the offices and reception area. And to the left is an enlarged partial plan of the counter space where the alcohol will be located and displayed. The site meets all standards of the Santa Ana Municipal Code. The project will require, will provide additional amenities for the hotel residents, which currently doesn't offer alcohol, and is also similar to some of the hotels in the area, which will allow them to be, to play a larger part in the facilities and what they propose to offer. Standards ensure that the facility will remain an eating establishment and will not become an attractive nuisance for the property. And with that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2016-23. I will be happy to answer any questions, as well as the applicant is available for any questions.
Have commissioners questions? Commissioner Bauer, Commissioner McLaughlin, Commissioner Bussara. Of course, of course.
Just, just one small question.
Yes.
On the, from reading the report, it sounds like they wanna be able to do it in the little cafe area, the pool area, and that's what it shows on your exhibit. The lobby's also included, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of the common grounds for the hotel.
Okay, I didn't see the highlight. I just wanted to make sure. So we weren't trying to limit it just to the two spots, but lobby would be included as well?
Correct, yes. All, all common grounds of the hotel, which would include the lobby space, which is directly in front of the cafe.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? No, it sounds like, no, thank you, it sounds good. Do we have any written communications on this item? I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there any members of the public that may or may not have filled out one of these cards, which is to speak? Sir, come on up. When you're done speaking, you may can fill out one of these.
Hi, this is my first time, so what do I need to do, or?
I'll talk quick. Now, I got three minutes. Just kidding. Yeah, it's our first time.
My name is Wee and I am the general manager of the property next door to, of Clarion Inn and Suites, the Best Western Orange County Hotel. I don't have an objection per se, but I'm more concerned. Before it was the Clarion, it was a Comfort Hotel. And it's, it's pretty well-known on our block that the hotel, it's, was not a very good place to begin with. It was a, was a gathering place for, I would say, tweakers, drug addicts, prostitutes, hookers, and numerous problems. And if they do have a liquor license now, what are they doing to ensure that there's no, not much of a more nuisance or problem regarding that?
Well, we're gonna, we'll have you up to speak here in a second, yeah.
Yeah, like, are they gonna have more security? Are they gonna do, are they gonna do, like, watch the property more carefully? Because, like I said, it's, it's, I have, I have problems on my property. We constantly kick out what I perceive to be tweakers, drug addicts, people that has problems or using the hotel room as a shade, for shady deals or anything like that.
Why don't we have the applicant answer a question, because we won't really, we can't really answer. So why don't you come up and, if you have some additional comments, and now's a good chance to.
Good evening, thank you. Yeah, we've, October of last year, we converted from a Comfort Inn and Suites to a Clarion. And we have completely cleaned up the property. We've renovated the entire property. We've renovated all the rooms, all the public spaces, added numerous new items in the restaurant. We've also increased our rates, which has gotten rid of what he's talking about with the riffraff. We have added security. We've added cameras to our facilities. And we are, there's plans to also put a wall around the exterior of the property on the backside where the railroad tracks are. So we have definitely addressed those issues. We want the property to be successful and run as a, a property that would be suitable for the area. And, and obviously, we want a property that's gonna make money as well, so we've definitely cleaned it up.
Since we have you up here, are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Verino.
What's the timeline plan for the, the back wall? How soon do you expect to have that up?
My name is Michelle Mirprey. I'm one of the owners. We completed the renovation, April 1st was when we completed what was required by the franchise company. The, we're looking at doing either a six-foot or eight-foot iron fence around the entire property. That would actually require us working with this gentleman's owner, who I am familiar with and have met before. So that's part of phase two, where we're gonna work with our neighbor to see if it is something that we can do, because the only way it would make sense was if we could enclose the property entirely. So that is definitely in the works. It's something we would like to do to try and alleviate non-guests from coming through our property.
Yeah, definitely. The sooner the better. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant, since they're up here?
Just clarification. Just clarification. So you are the owners and the, and this is just a new franchise for you or a new, I mean, the same management process that existed before is the same management process that's going forward?
Not at all. So we purchased this hotel in October of 2014 from the previous owner. We replaced, Doug is new, he's a new manager with us as of July of last year. We've replaced over 50% of the staff, so we've, we've changed almost everything about the hotel that we were able to in that short time. And when we purchased the asset, the goal was to turn it around and improve it to the standard that we would expect. We do own other hotels in the state. And our goal is to really bring this up from where it was. We spent approximately $2 million on the renovation, that being the guest rooms, public spaces. The idea would be to improve the, the business base, and I think Doug can also speak to this. We've added a big group and corporate base to our business, which was never there before. We've replaced the local business, the undesirable local business with this corporate and group business. We have pilots staying with us. So I think if you, if you look at the business mix as it is right now, it's, it's definitely changed from what it was two years ago.
Any other questions? No, it sounds like you're on a good path here, so, thank you very much. Anyone else, members of public, wish to speak? Okay, I'd like to bring it back to the commission for discussion, a motion, and all the above. Commissioner Bauer, you wanna take the lead on this?
Well, I'd just thank the applicant, actually, for the investment in Santa Ana. I always appreciate that. People spending their money in the city and investing. So I had moved that we adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2016-23.
I'll second it. I just wanna echo Commissioner Bauer's comments. And I appreciate the gentleman coming out and letting us know, you know, what, what's been going on in that little corner of our city. But it's good to hear, though, that, you know, despite your concerns, it sounds like they're on the right path to making more improvements to that site. And by all means, this isn't the only time you can come to us. If there are issues that arise in the future, please continue to keep us informed. But with that, I second this motion.
I also echo the comments made, the, thanks for investing in Santa Ana and doing what you're doing. I think that's, it sounds like a nice improvement. The amenities you're offering is consistent with other hotels, et cetera. It sounds like your neighbors, you can work out a wall deal, that'd be good. So any other comments? If not, I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Mill absent. Okay, great. Good luck. Thanks, guys. I'd like to move on to the absences department. Do we have a motion to excuse the absence of Commissioner Mill?
Salute.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with, of course, Commissioner Mill not here to vote. It's pretty rare to have to excuse him, isn't it?
As part of the planning manager report tonight, I'd like to update you on the general plan program. We have completed approximate, about 28 meetings and public meetings. We've sort of, we're coming to the end of our initial community participation program, which address, was, which was designed to get input from the community on what they liked about the community and where they saw we can make improvements. The last piece of it is a youth program, which is actually being spearheaded by local youth. And it's gonna be over the summer. We'll be, we'll be working with staff on that program. But it will be spearheaded by them and we expect it to be a very technologically up-to-date kind of program. I think it will have lots of Snapchat and Facebook, not Facebook, that's passe, but other technologies that most of us don't operate. But tonight, what we'd like to show you is a video. We're planning, we're designing our program to be very user-friendly. And part of that is doing a series of videos. And the first one is about what a general plan is. So at these community meetings, we've been showing this video and we'd like to include you in it as well. So here we go.
Apologize for the low-tech audio here. We had some issues. But here we are.
Welcome to the conversation, Santa Ana. Have you ever closed your eyes and envisioned what Santa Ana might look like in 25 years? The diverse neighborhoods, children playing soccer in the park, the streetcar zipping through downtown, a sensory overload of culture, music, dancing, a teleconference, a closed business deal at a local coffeehouse, a mouth-watering balena on a warm summer day. The future is in your hands and it all starts now. The Santa Ana General Plan, a shared vision. How did Santa Ana reach our vision? There must be some type of long-term blueprint to guide the community's vision for future growth. You're absolutely right. It's called a general plan. This long-term constitution sets forth all the goals, policies, and programs for the city. As required by the state, we must come together to develop a plan for seven key elements. Now, let's imagine we're back in chemistry class and let's take a look at the element table. First, land use. It's a vision for the location of single-family neighborhoods, apartment complexes, mixed-use development, commercial shopping destinations, industrial businesses, schools, parks, and more. Next, mobility. How do we plan to get around the city? It's more than just cars. It's also about walking, biking, mass transit, and more. Next up, housing. What types of residential developments do we envision to house our diverse residents, especially our aging, special needs, and low-income populations? We wanna make sure that the elements of Santa Ana stay around for future generations. The sustainability element sets goals for water, energy, and conservation to ensure that Santa Ana has the resources it needs to continue to thrive. Next, open space. How do we ensure that all of our residents have access to parks and recreation areas to stay active and fit? Now, I'm not sure if you can hear this next one. It's noise. What type of plans do we have to reduce excessive noise to ensure an enjoyable environment for our residents and visitors? Last, but definitely not least, safety. What's our plan to provide emergency services to ensure everyone is able to live and travel safely? But that can't be it. Santa Ana is truly something special. We propose to add five additional elements to fill in the gaps. To help us continue to take pride in our beautiful buildings and scenic corridors, we've incorporated an urban design and architecture element to ensure we continue to build high-quality buildings. We also take pride in being careful stewards of our history and our historic buildings. The historic preservation element guides programs and policies to ensure our future generations can experience the rich history of Santa Ana's roots. Next, we wanna ensure that we have a thriving economy that continues to provide jobs in several industries. The economic development element sets goals on how to make Santa Ana the right choice for business. The foundation of our community is rooted in education, arts, and culture, which happens to be the next element. These policies ensure Santa Ana continues to be a magnet for new ideas and creativity. Santa Ana cares about ensuring access to lifesaving services in our time of need. The human services element provides goals for the equitable delivery of care. All of these elements come together to form the plan for the future of Santa Ana. Now, we wanna hear from you. We want you to be a part of the conversation for the future vision for tomorrow. And in five years, and the future, let's work together to create a shared vision for Santa Ana.
We played that video a few times, so we've definitely gotten our mileage out of it. But as Canada was mentioning, we've had about 28 meetings so far, which all begun back in November. I'm currently the project manager for the general plan update, so we're working tirelessly here since November to try to get out to all members of the community. And, you know, we're doing all of this kind of in-house. We did something pretty exciting, which is we noticed lots of youth coming out to our events, so we decided to partner with the youth. One of our council members, who is part of KidWorks, volunteered to host a few meetings over at KidWorks. But we've now partnered with the youth and are creating kind of an out-youth strategy that's gonna not only involve them, but empower them to help us get the message out to these youths. So we're not the experts on Facebook, everything else. They're gonna be coming into City Hall and we're creating this summer program where the youth can actually get involved and we can get out to the community. And so all of this is kind of being done in-house. We're pretty excited. As Canada was mentioning, the, the next steps are to identify the themes and create a vision statement. We're still kind of in the listening phase, but we hope to report out to you all in the next few months with another video, which is gonna summarize kind of what we heard. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any other planning department comments? Since you used up your three minutes. Planning commissioners, how about Commissioner Bauer? We'll start with you.
Thank you very much, Bernie. I appreciate all that work. And I know that's a big task. You guys are doing this in-house and you're not using consultants, is that right? Is that what the?
No, no.
So that's a big decision and I think it's the right one and you can see it's bearing fruit.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Just, good job on the video. It really is a good start. And I know there's more work that has to be done. It's probably another year, year and a half of getting everything together, but hopefully in the end it'll be a great, great plan, so thanks.
Commissioner Verino?
Good job, guys. I think it's, the video's great. I know you guys have seen it a million times, but for me, for this newbie, it was really, really good. I really appreciated all the, all the work.
And we're pleased to have Commissioner Alderetti here.
Thank you. And I will say, I enjoyed the video. And I'm, I'm glad to hear the, the amount of input that we're receiving through all these meetings, so that's great. Hopefully, that input's coming from all around the city, because that will inform an even better general plan. That's it for me.
Last, but not, no, second to last, I'm last. Commissioner Bussara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, that was an excellent video. I mean, that's one of those videos that you would show at, like, an economic development summit. And just, it really just has that, it was just some great captions, great views of the city. You guys did an excellent job. That was exceptional. And also, I just wanna kind of throw out there, this past Sunday was the Downtown Santa Ana Breakfast. And it was easily a success. Anybody that attended it, Mark was there. It was fantastic. And one thing that, that was really exciting for me to see was just, you know, when we're sitting up here on the dais, we definitely see different folks from the community that come in with a difference of opinions on where we're at with certain projects and certain directions. But just to see everybody come out from, you know, whether it was Downtown Inc., Santa Ana Business Council, whether it was certain neighborhoods, it was just a nice collective. And you heard that from a lot of people, to see that there's so many folks that were out there. And I think, for the most part, everybody had a good time, so I just wanted to bring that up. I thought it was really exceptional. I thought it was really exceptional. I want to thank Ryan Smolar and Madeline Spencer, uh, who really helped put that together, and, um, Victor Negrete, who also contributed, again, excellent job by all three.
Commissioner McLaughlin, you had something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, one thing that we noticed when we did the, uh, because Phil triggered my mind there. When we did the economic development last year for the GROW Conference, um, the biggest comment that we got out of it was, "We didn't talk enough about education." "We didn't talk enough about education." And I know that was brought up in this video, but I don't think it was enough. I mean, I think we have to realize that, that, you know, education's gonna be a key factor in our planning strategy, our economic development, and a lot of other things. And, uh, we, we, I think we gotta devote a little bit more to that, because we do have a lot of opportunities here in the city, and, uh, we have a lot, a lot of opportunities, linkages surrounding the city, and we ought to take advantage of that a little bit.
I just want to sound like a broken record, that was a great video, and, um, with that being said, we're, we're adjourned.
Oh, before you adjourn, I would like you to wait, you have to turn to, we are not going to have a meeting on the 27th. That, uh, we are tentatively not scheduled, because there won't be a complimentary council meeting. When we believe that, at one point, we briefly under-jet that when we circulate it, we believe that San Ana was going to be about an inter-emergency ordinance, that you would need to, that would then need to come back to you, uh, before we took the draft over next to that. They continue that item, so, you know, we'll have that item. So, we will not be having a meeting on the 27th, and your next meeting will be July 11th. So if you could adjourn to that date without being on.
Okay, I'll re-adjourn to the Ju- July 11th meeting. Okay, great.
Is your gate twenty?
Yeah, no, I had tickets, but I, yeah. Well, I had ti- I had...